I'd like to call this meeting to order on this day, Wednesday, August 13th, 2014. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting, whether you're here in person, listening to us via the radio, or watching us on television. Mayor Tower is not here this evening, so I'll be filling in as the deputy mayor. I will certainly ask Ms. Sorenson and Ms. Hubrigg to certainly help keep me in line during today's meeting, as this is the first meeting that I will be conducting. Ms. Hubrigg, would you be willing to do a roll call?
I will. Peck?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Pansky?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Tower? Present six.
We'll now move on to the invocation in which Counselor Peck will lead us in the invocation.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
And on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have two public hearings. The first one is ordinance 14-354. There's been a request to waive. And, correct me if I'm not wrong, but we do three readings?
Three.
Three readings. Ordinance 14-354, approve amendment to comprehensive planned use maps changing the land use designation of property bounded by US Highway 45, County Highway S, County Highway Y, Riff Road, and Wywosh State Recreational Trail in the town of Oshkosh from residential and industrial to commercial. Plan Commission recommends approval. Ordinance 14-354, approve amendment to comprehensive planned use maps changing the land use designation of property bounded by US Highway 45, County Highway S, County Highway Y, Riff Road, and Wywosh State Recreational Trail in the town of Oshkosh from residential and industrial to commercial. Plan Commission recommends approval. Ordinance 14-354, approve amendment to comprehensive planned land use maps changing the land use designation of property bounded by US Highway 45, County Highway S, County Highway Y, Riff Road, and Wywosh State Recreational Trail in the town of Oshkosh from residential and industrial to commercial. Plan Commission recommends approval.
Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Motion to suspend the rules for consideration of an ordinance on first reading.
Second? There's been a motion and a second discussion? Then we will vote to waive the rules?
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Curate six.
I believe we now need a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance? Is there a discussion?
Just a quick question for staff. Is this area slated for annexation into the city at some point in the future? I'm assuming it is, being part of the comprehensive plan. Is there an agreement with the town of Oshkosh? And if so, when is that approached?
We don't have a border agreement with the town of Oshkosh.
We don't?
Darren can take the rest of that question.
You're on the right track. We don't have a boundary agreement with the town of Oshkosh, so it's not slated to come in at any point in the near future unless the property owners out there would need sewer water service.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? No? Please take the roll call vote. Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Curate six.
Okay, we'll read on, or move on to the second public hearing, which is Resolution 14-355. There's no request to waive. It is to adopt the revised GO transit routes seven and nine. Resolution 14-355, adopt revised GO transit routes seven and nine. Resolution 14-355, adopt revised GO transit routes seven and nine.
Oh.
Did you want to?
For discussion about?
Yep. Yeah, it's a public.
It's a public hearing, yes.
My name is Charles Hodge, 202 Oxford Avenue. I'm here today to sort of try and convince the council that the first three recommendations, where, you know, the, I'm not, the one, two, and three are pretty good, you know, pretty good replacement routes. The other route that is going to come, that is going to be going into Aurora, the one that's on the very last page, is not a very good, you know, alternative. If the, you know, if the first suggestions were taken, then people could get close to festival foods and also Aurora behavioral health and all the medical centers on that side of the street where they would be able to replace the bus stop to where it used to be. Right now, where the transit, where the transfer point is, it's really just too far away for the elderly and the disabled to get into festival, because it involves having to either go through the parking lot and all the traffic, or take the long way around on the sidewalk, which is, it's pretty close to 1,000 feet. So anyways, I really urge you all to really look at these before you make a decision, and try and make them as accommodating as possible for the elderly and the disabled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate Mr. Hodge's concern, and we've looked at that. And what I'd like to do is, on a trial basis, we could, if we use Route 7, which we're proposing to access Aurora, we can go out through the frontage road, use Aurora's frontage road, which there isn't a lot of traffic on, so we don't have a safety concern, and then we could turn left out of there, and we're willing to temporarily try putting that stop back by festival. We have a little bit of concern with time. We do have a little bit of time on Route 7, which is why we're proposing going into Aurora with it, but we'd like to try that with the caveat that we're going to do it on a trial basis and see how it works, but that would restore the stop to festival. So what we'd be talking about is we'd be losing two stops on West Haven Drive there, and there are two low-usage stops between Whistled and West Town, and then the one stop over by Whistled, we would move that one across to the other side of the street on Whistled. So I think that would solve the concern.
I have a question, Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, are the new traffic counters in the buses now, so that we know how many people are boarding at each stop?
They're not yet. We currently have them, as you know, on two buses. We just had the purchase approved at the last council meeting, so we've placed the order. So we should have.
So are we manually counting, so that we kind of know? Because you said temporarily. Are you looking at three months, six months, through the winter now that we're getting to the summer?
Sure. I would anticipate within three months, we should have them installed and place the purchase order.
But I mean, as far as the route changes, you said temporarily, you're going to go back to festival.
Right.
Do you have a kind of a timeline of how long you're going to kind of monitor that before you, would you just say it's working, not working? You have any idea at this point?
Yeah, I would say we could try it for a couple of months.
Okay.
And see how it works. We definitely want to have some type of decision before.
Because, you know, I was on the council when we originally approved all these plans, and we've made quite a few changes, and I don't want to keep confusing our users, you know, obviously, and so if we could consistently stay for, you know, six months, three months, whatever you feel is appropriate, so that our citizens can get used to the changes too that use the buses would be good. But I support that. I think it's a good idea to try to go back. As Mr. Hodge said, you know, a lot of people do go to festival foods, but I know a lot of the concerns we've had were, you know, making sure our buses get citizens and those that are disabled to the hospitals and to the clinics that they need to, and I think this addresses that fairly well, so.
Sure.
It's very good. Thank you. Jim, maybe if you could explain, because it's in the memo, but I thought what you talked about, how Route 7 and 5 work together in tandem, that actually, this will actually, for people that want to go downtown from Aurora, that this would actually improve that convenience.
Yes, so what this would do is, people that are coming from downtown, it would be a similar timeframe to get to Aurora if you were coming from downtown. However, right now, if you want to go to the Aurora Hospital, you would have to get on Route 6, go down to Walmart, and then you transfer to Route 9, which would take you into Aurora. With this option, you're going to take Route 5 into the transfer point, which is on West Town in front of Festival. Route 5 then becomes Route 7. It kind of circles the frontage road, and then it comes back in, and it would go into Aurora. So the timing would be approximately the same if you were coming from downtown, but the convenience advantage is you wouldn't have to transfer buses like you do now. So if you were in a wheelchair or disabled, you wouldn't have to get off the bus and get back on the bus, you could stay on it. And then the same thing on the way home, on the way back downtown. It would be similar to what it is now. You would get on Route 7, which actually becomes Route 5 at the transfer point on West Town Avenue, so you wouldn't have to get off the bus from downtown or to downtown. You can make a direct route.
Okay. That being said, are, for those that may have disability issues or other issues, whether it's elderly or anybody, what changes are we going to be handing out information? How are we going to get that information out to the users? Because, you know, I know we use the Internet a lot, we use our website, but sometimes I think having a map that we could hand to people periodically, or have it available if they have questions, that the driver could give it to the citizen?
The driver's really the key, and Jim's got a plan for that as well, if you want to explain that, Jim.
Yeah, the drivers, they would have maps available, and also, we do post all route changes on Facebook, which we do get quite a bit of traffic on Facebook. We also post them on the buses and at the Transit Center, and we post it pretty much everywhere we can, and then the buses. Bus drivers are also knowledgeable in that. So I was happy that at our last Transit Advisory Meeting, and Ms. Pansky can speak for that, that we did have pretty good input from citizens on the different routes. There's a number of users that are benefiting from the new routes, which is why they didn't prefer a couple of the options that we had out there. We had users that are using the bus to get from the outlet mall to work downtown and using the bike and ride option. We had some users that are using the bus route system to get to the 20th Avenue Y. So they were, they didn't want us to eliminate service to those areas, which is why the board chose this option. It seemed to have the least impact on the riders.
Thank you.
One question for you, Jim, so the people that are watching and listening understand, when you say Aurora, there are, I think, three entrances to Aurora.
Sure.
Which entrance?
We currently use the main entrance, which is right by the front circle. So the bus goes in the circle, and then it stops right at the end of the.
So it's the east entrance to the hospital?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that would be. Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify for the people watching and listening, what you're discussing tonight is what is in the plan that we would be adopting in the revision for seven and nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's what's in there. The only change we're making is that we're going to temporarily try putting that stop by Festival, and if it works well, you know, we'll keep it there. We might have to make some other adjustments timing-wise, but that would be our intention. The other benefit, there's two other benefits I just wanted to make you aware of that I didn't mention. One is that currently both, Route 9 goes into both hospitals, which is part of the timing issue we're having. By doing this, each bus, we can secure two mobility devices. This will allow us to get two riders to each hospital, because it'll be a different bus serving each one, whereas currently the same bus uses, goes to both the hospitals. And then secondly, the other advantage is this, we go through the town of Algoma from Whistled Avenue to Oakwood, which is a dead spot for us, being that we're a city service, so we'll eliminate that as well.
Jim, if I may?
Sure.
We are having some issues with pick and save shelter currently. Are there any possible issues with moving the shelter to a new location?
We haven't incurred any at this point. I think what you're talking about is the shelter that's on West Haven, that's on the terrace by Aurora. That was initially installed before this decision was made to go into the hospital. When the routes were redone, we weren't going into the hospital, and then we made the changes to go into the hospital. So what we would do is, we would move that shelter from the Aurora Hospital side of the street back to the Festival side of the street, which, like Mr. Hodge stated, that will give good access to citizens that want to go to Festival or to those Aurora clinics right next to it.
Just no issues, hopefully, with putting the shelter back over on that side?
No, that actually, I don't think we'll have any issues with that.
Okay, hopefully not.
Yeah, one of the issues we have with pick and save, and we are actively working on that issue with them, and they've been pretty cooperative, is that that's on the state highway, and we don't have any right-of-way there. It goes sidewalk, and then the property owner, whereas over by Festival, we have a little bit more right-of-way.
Is there a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 14-355?
So move.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion, council?
Just a quick point of order. Is this only the first reading tonight, or, I'm sorry?
I just, three.
Okay.
It's just resolution.
It's a resolution.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm confused, I had something else. Disregard my question.
All right. Pam, if you take the roll call vote, please.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Curate six.
Thank you. We'll move on to citizen statements to council. Citizens are welcome to come up and address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or any other electioneering.
My name is Charles Hodge, 202 Oxford Avenue. I'm reading a letter here that all of the council members have a copy of. I also gave some attachments with some exhibits and some excerpts from the 2011 Transportation Development Plan. Dear Councilmembers, the Americans with Disability Act offers no timelines for compliance and does not offer any variances for the city of Oshkosh on intended compliance. So I'm taking this time to respectfully remind the council that the ADA requires that all federally subsidized transportation systems must take immediate action to resolve any ADA violations and deficiencies the minute they become aware of them. Not tomorrow, not next week, and not in another year and a half, when the present transportation development plan is set to expire. It is quite clear to me that the city of Oshkosh, city management, the Transit Advisory Board, and the Oshkosh Transportation Department continues to feel empowered and comfortable giving feeble excuses and making futile changes in a route system that will never work in a city the size of Oshkosh. The present radial route system we have now, complete with six transfer points, was planned, designed, and implemented by the Oshkosh Transportation Department in complete defiance of the 2011 Transportation Development Plan. The 2011 TDP had recommended that a single hub system should be implemented for a city the size of Oshkosh. Everyone on the council should already be keenly aware of the extensive problems that a radial hub system with scattered transfer points has caused the citizens of Oshkosh. A radial system with transfer points is designed for use only in larger metropolitan areas. Every single issue and problem we have had with the present bus system could have easily been avoided if the common council and the Transit Advisory Board had made the Oshkosh Transportation Department follow the recommendations of the 2011 TDP. A single hub route system is reliable and efficient, and has been proven effective in literally hundreds of smaller urban communities. Page 204, 2011 TDP. The Oshkosh Transportation Department had absolutely no valid or compelling reasons not to implement a single hub fixed route system for the city of Oshkosh. Also, I want the public and the council members to know that I find it very disappointing that Mr. Collins, our transportation director, and our city manager, Mark Roloff, are feeling the need to release misinformation to the press and to the public about the issues and problems we are currently experiencing with our fixed route system. It is beyond me why these gentlemen would be willing to sacrifice their integrity in order to advance some professional agendas. At the May TAB meeting, Mr. Collins stated that over a year of planning, public input, and extensive research went into the development of the routes. He stated, "We have come too far to go back to the old system. We will look at issues and ways of correcting them. However, we will not go back. Instead, look for ways to make the system better for everyone." Now, as the council members consider Mr. Collins's remarks, they should note that Mr. Collins conveniently fails to mention that after all this planning, public input, and extensive research, he lists neither one of the two alternate route systems recommended in the 2011 TDP was adopted by the Oshkosh Transportation Department. The Oshkosh Transportation Department took it upon themselves to invent the one we are using now. Mr. Roloff, our city manager, stated in a recent article published in The Northwestern that Options for Independent Living has concluded that the city meets, and in some cases exceeds, ADA requirements. However, I have been advised that exceeding the ADA is an impossible task. You are either compliant or noncompliant to the legislation. And also, I can confidently tell the common council, from working with Options for Independent Living, they are obviously suppressing the fact that our bus system is riddled with ADA violations. Found in the same Northwestern article is a statement that is difficult to attach responsibility for. It obviously came from either Mr. Collins or Mr. Roloff, and said, "To help make sure that adequate service is being provided to disabled citizens, the city asked Options for Independent Living to evaluate Oshkosh's routes and services." Both Mr. Collins and Mr. Roloff know that this is a bold-faced lie. It was me who invited Options for Independent Living to Oshkosh to evaluate Oshkosh's routes and services. I have attached some email correspondence between me and Tom Dietrich, the executive director of Options for Independent Living in Green Bay, to support this claim. In closing, I will respectfully request that the common council order city management and the Transportation Department to adopt and implement one of the two alternate route systems recommended in the 2011 TDP. Thank you very much for letting me exercise my First Amendment rights.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge.
Short comment on the budget workshop last night. I sat through two hours and 10 minutes with you. I was probably one of five people in us that would actually watch it, and I can understand the reason why, because that's not quite as exciting as watching paint dry. But I understand the need for it. I didn't miss the first one, I didn't miss the second one, I certainly won't miss the third one. Tomorrow at the Senior Center, our Budget and Finances Committee is meeting, and something that Mr. Roloff could take to Mr. Mauer and get into the final process in the fall. The other thing is, I'm hoping everybody's got their calendar handy with a big red pen, because you have to circle Sunday, September 7th, one of the best functions for all-around fellowship in the city of Oshkosh, which is the Fall Family Fun Fest at the Senior Center. It starts out at 10 o'clock in the morning, which Mr. Peck has been a part of, which is the Granny Smith Run Walk. That is the run, the walk follows it.
Ms. Allison Osby was there as well last year.
Good. I don't know how I missed you, but I must have missed you. And along with the festivities for that particular day, it's basically the same format as was last year, and I don't know if you get the current. I hope you do, because that means you're a friend of the center, and if you don't, you can always pick it up in many places around town. But if you prefer not to buy tickets at the door, I know you all know where my phone number is, and I got my tickets right next to my heart, and I do something different than the rest of the members selling, I deliver. So keep it in mind, help us out. Looking forward to seeing all of you there on the Sunday, September 7th. And by the way, the Packers even cooperated. When we talked to them, Mike Murphy said, "We don't want to interrupt your program. We're going to play on Thursday night instead, and leave that Sunday open for you." So if he can do it, I'm sure you can help us do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. Anyone else like to come up from the audience?
My name is Patricia Deener. I come to you this evening in regard to, it was mentioned on TV, the federal government prefers nobody being on the railroad property. We were approached, our family and other people, in the last two weeks, there's been 20-some people on there, and the parents are bringing the kids right on the tracks. I don't know how to express this, but I don't want to mention my name, but the police want to know why cops are on all time, wherever I move. Well, I'll tell you, it has to have a lot to do with drugs. And we have about eight neighbors that are very firm, and we're tired of it. I do not want the police department to mention where I have moved to now. We left that area because of our health. I do not want the past brought up about Caroline anymore. My husband went and talked to an officer the other day. He said, "You know, you can be a trouble for bringing stuff up like that." We move because of drug people, and people like to harass when they're drunk or stoned, and we don't like it anymore. And we feel we have been harassed. I have had letters sent to my home saying things that are not true, that I have to get a doctor involved to prove his property, and it's a shame. And just like the police told us the other, the last two days they've been out, we have to be adults, and you people on the council need to be adults and try to talk adult stuff. It's not funny things anymore. When you have a disabled problem, you've been harassed because you want to improve your home. We are bringing money into our home that we had to go through, suffer, and almost die, and it's a shame. So I was told we have a 90-degree angle across the tracks. That means, I can't mention Mr. Roloff, but I'm mentioning to you people, that means maybe you need to open two intersections. If we can cross the tracks, if we got a walk up, big, long block that somebody needs, federal government needs to open two more intersections. We have a lot of people that are handicapped that cross the tracks. So nobody's to cut the grass, the city's in charge. There are people cutting the grass. I've been harassed by an officer, and I don't want to bring up the past, is because a gentleman was cutting it, and he said, "People are tired of it getting 14, 15 inches high." Well, you know what? We got city crew and young kids trying to get out and clean up our neighborhoods. They can only do so much, and I'm glad the city is doing it. We all would like to help, but there are liabilities, and you know what? It took me to get the blump from it all, because I have a neighbor that's in his 80s and said, "This officer is after me," and it's a shame. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Deener. Any other comments? Okay. We'll move on to consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are those items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items, and a member of the public or common council may request that a. may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Approval of Bills Presented by the Finance Director. Receipt of Claim Filed with the City's Insurance Company. A Bergstrom Auto for alleged damages to one of their vehicles from a paint truck. B Tina Peck for alleged damages to her vehicle from metal pieces left from bridge repair. C Donald Swift for alleged damages from hitting a manhole cover. Resolution 14-358, Approve Accepting Storm Sewer Easement. Approve Agreement Easement with UW Oshkosh for Cross Access. Plan Commission Recommends Approval. Resolution 14-357, Approve Accepting Easement at 240/250 and 257 West 9th Avenue. Plan Commission Recommends Approval. Resolution 14-358, Approve Accepting Easement at 731 West South Park Avenue. Plan Commission Recommends Approval. Resolution 14-359, Award Bid for Primary Clarifier Pumps Replacement for Wastewater Treatment Facility to Broker LLC. Resolution 14-360, Award Bid for Flooring Replacement for Safety Building to H.J. Martin &amp; Sons Incorporated. Resolution 14-361, Approval of Amendment to Agreement for Engineering Services with AECom Technical Services, Inc., for the Design of Storm Water Detention Basins in the Campbell Street Watershed in the Amount of $62,0698. Resolution 14-362, Approval of Initial Resolution for Special Assessments for Various Water Main Extensions, Contract Number 14-08. Resolution 14-363, Approval of 2014 Program for New Sidewalk on West 20th Avenue and West South Park Avenue. Resolution 14-364, Approval of Agreement for Engineering Services with CH2M Hill Engineers, Inc., for Preliminary Design of the Water Filtration Plant Clear Wells in the Amount of $141,370. Resolution 14-365, Approve Agreement with Chamco to Acquire Property at 43 East 7th Avenue. RDA recommends approval. And I see Ms. Hartman is at the podium.
Good evening. Elizabeth Hartman, CEO of Chamco, 43 East 7th Avenue. I just wanted to speak in favor of this resolution. You're probably aware that Chamco was involved in working with the city on putting this deal together. And we've agreed to be the purchaser of this property and the interim owner for the next three years until the city is more ready to prepare this property for redevelopment purposes. And this does allow the city to gain control of this property. Right now, a key piece of property in the South Shore redevelopment area at a time when there is a willing seller at a price that is the lower of two recent appraisals, and that may not be the case in the future. It also allows the city to have no cash outlay at this time. Chamco will be the purchaser of the building, and the city will repurchase it in August of 2017. And in the meantime, Chamco will lease this property to one of our clients, who is the current owner of the building. And this will allow this business to reduce some costs at a time when it's been negatively impacted by a reduction in business from a major Oshkosh employer. And it also will allow the city to not be a landlord for the next three years. Chamco will do that, which is something that is within our area of expertise, and the city won't have to worry about sitting with a vacant building potentially. So Chamco's happy to be a conduit on this transaction and assist both the city and an Oshkosh business, and I hope that you approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Questions?
Ms. Hartman, just a quick question. The seller in their lease arrangement with Chamco, that's going to be strictly between Chamco. The city doesn't have any concern whether or not that person or that entity has a two-year lease or a three-year lease to the term?
That is correct.
And is there any situation that they may need to or want to extend the lease beyond that three-year period?
I think it's difficult to say at this point. We are structuring it as a three-year lease. It's possible at the end of that term, if they're in a better financial position, that they might be willing to extend that lease beyond the three-year period. But at this point, three years was really what they were willing to commit to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
My name's Dick O'Day, 715 Hazel. One real quick question to begin with. What's the cost on this? And along with that, we've said that the cost is the lower of two appraisals. How do those appraisals relate to the assessed value? And I guess if you go for a third question is, why do we need it? Why are we committing to just buying it three years from now from Chamco? What's going to happen to it if we don't buy it? It's going to sit there, and if anything, it's going to be cheaper because nobody else is going to buy it. So if you could... I'm sorry, I just kept asking questions, but I would like answers to the first couple of questions.
And I believe we have...
Mr. Roloff.
Okay. Excuse me just a minute. I know they're there, but okay. You people are voting on this, right? You're the ones that are going to make those decisions. You don't know? There's nobody sitting at that podium that can tell me and answer those questions?
Sure. We can look that up for you, but yeah.
Time out. The asking price is $780,000. The reason that the city is interested in working with Chamco and purchasing the property is that the long-term fiscal impact would be to ensure the redevelopment of the manufacturing property into future commercial and/or residential property in conformance with the South Shore Redevelopment Plan.
Okay. Is this the same thing that's back later in 14-365? Is this what we're talking about? Are we talking about something different?
No. On the approval of acquiring the property at 43 East 7th Avenue. And as compared to postdevelopment values of the Marion Road, the redevelopment area are about $2 million per acre to date. So we're actually saving money by purchasing now.
Who else is buying it? Who's in the market for it? What's it assessed?
We are in the market because this is in our redevelopment area for future planning and development for economic development in the city of Oshkosh. So when land becomes available, we look at purchasing it for future development in our riverfront development area. So that's why we're working with Chamco to purchase the property, because it also fits in our comprehensive plan for future development in the riverfront area.
And you're telling me if you don't buy this property right now, somebody else is going to snap it up and do something else with it?
It's possible, and then we would lose that opportunity.
Somebody would put their own money into it as opposed to tax dollars.
Well, first off, we're not buying it right now.
No, but you're committing to buy it in three years.
Sure. No.
So it's going to pay at least the $780,000 or whatever it is, or more. You're going to pay Chamco in three years. For something that you have no idea of what's going to be there, what possibilities are going to be there, at a time when you have, for 30 years, been trying to get something done in the 100th block, you have the whole north side of the river, that the only thing that could be called a success on the north side of the river is the apartment buildings, which literally have almost nothing to do with the river, but are successful because of the fact that you pretty much mismanaged, in my opinion, Tiff Districts to build short-term housing next to the third or fourth-largest university in the state.
I'd like Mr. Davis to explain kind of just for your... What some of the long-term plans are.
The one other question is, what's the assessed value for this right now?
I don't have that in me.
The other one, the other assessment was $892,000.
I'm not talking about appraisal. I'm talking about assessment.
I don't have any.
Alan and Mr.... It's virtually the same. But I think Mr. Davis has the details on that.
Off the top of my head, I believe it's 750. I'm looking it up since I... Where's my memo?
It's on page two of the staff memo. City's assessment for the property is $180,400 for the land and $570,700 for the improvements, for a total of $750,700. As I stated, they're relatively close to one another.
And I guess, and one more question is, why is this on the consent agenda for its one, two? This is kind of like at the state level, throwing budget items or other items into the budget, you know, going through. This is something that you look at it here, and it sounds like you're buying a one-unit house or something for $50,000 or $100,000. You don't really care. You know, this should definitely be up for evaluation for the city, the taxpayers to know about, straight out to begin with. This should never be on the consent agenda to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you.
With respect to that issue, I respectfully agree with the gentleman. I wasn't here last week when the final agenda was put together. I would have normally put this off consent, and I apologize for not catching it earlier. I agree with Mr. O'Day.
So I have a question. Mr. Davis, could you just give us a little bit of what you envision as our Director of Development, that this property, that area, will be looking for? And what kind of timeline are you looking at potentially developing this area for the city?
That's a good question, and I'm not sure I can give you a specific answer. The city has adopted the redevelopment plan for the South Shore that identifies this area as a mixture of the commercial and residential. Right now, it's manufacturing. To the north, we purchased... I'm sorry, to the south, we had purchased the Miles Kimball property. Part of that has already been redeveloped into other residential. We have another parcel that's about twice the size of this, that we think is critical for the redevelopment. We weren't going to be able to redevelop that property on 9th unless this property was also combined with that property on 9th, so that it actually had the access and the visibility to the Riverwalk. So we've already made that commitment to the south. Without this property, the investment we've made to the south will not yield any kind of benefit in the near future, since it would be surrounded by industrial, and I just don't see residential being built on that block until that property to the north is acquired and redeveloped as well. And we envision a larger development, not the individual pieces. So I expect those roads will be relocated or vacated, so that we have a larger buildable parcel. The RDA has purchased already the railroad property that's budding both these properties. And we have an expectation that we'll be building the Riverwalk down Pioneer Drive once that's relocated. So all the pieces are coming together to put the Riverwalk and make this site available for redevelopment. Now, when that's going to happen is a much more difficult question, because we don't have a specific developer at this point in time. We have other properties that we're still developing on Marion Road. My expectation is, over the next few years, we're going to finish with the Marion Road redevelopment. Then, depending on how the Jolwin property takes off, then I think this would be the next logical location. And I guess I can't underline how important it is for this area to redevelop, because I think that's going to help the redevelopment of the Pioneer property, as well as other properties on South Main Street, including the Buckstaff property.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question. And just so that, I mean, the citizens know and the taxpayers know, I mean, the intention with a purchase like this is not to temporarily take it off the tax rolls. The city is purchasing this, but eventually, we're going to sell the property to a private developer. That's the goal. It will go back on the tax rules, hopefully at a...
Much higher rate.
Value, yeah. Much higher than it is now.
And Mr. Herman's mentioned the $2 million per acre. That's what the Marion Road property's turning out to be for the sellable property. So if you do the long-term math, $2 million is still going to be a better and long-term tax benefit for the city, as well as the type of use, I think would be more in line with what the city envisions for the downtown riverfront area rather than manufacturing.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Moving on. Resolution 14-366, Approval of Special Event Oshkosh Ambassador's Senior Softball Tournament to Utilize Menominee Park for Their Badgers Classic Senior Softball Tournament, August 14th, 15th, 16th, and 17th, 2014. Resolution 14-367, Approval of Block Party Request, Evan Street Between East Irving Avenue and East Lincoln Avenue, August 16th, 2014. Resolution 14-368, Approve Appointments for Bid Board and Board of Appeals. Resolution 14-369, Disallowance of Claim by Vicki Sherwin. Resolution 14-370, Disallowance of Claim by Harry Van Damme. Resolution 14-371, Approve Special Class B Licenses, Operator Licenses, and Taxi Cab Driver
My name is Sean Goel. I am a member for American Investments LLC. I'm here to talk about Resolution 14-363. I would like to request the council members to reconsider putting a sidewalk on the southeast corner of Highway 44 and 20th Avenue. We have a property that's a gas station on that side of the road, and the city is proposing a sidewalk that will come basically, pretty much within our driveway, very close to our gas bump islands. My concern is the safety of the pedestrians on that side of the street. There are no stop signs on that side of the street, and not to mention, the side of the street is very busy. So I don't know in the first place how the pedestrians plan to cross that street despite having the buttons on the traffic sign poles. In the last two or three years, I have witnessed plenty of accidents on that intersection, especially on that side of the street, where people have rammed their vehicles in the traffic sign poles and knocked the lights down, basically on the intersection. Besides that, I don't think at this point, city has a plan to extend that sidewalk to any of the neighboring properties. So I don't know how they are planning to connect the city by just linking that sidewalk to that one property and not to the other properties. So I'm here to request the council members to reconsider putting this particular sidewalk into that property. And I think it's still in the preliminary planning stages, so I don't know if anyone has answer on any of the plan that's going in for that sidewalk.
Mr. Potek, can you assist with this?
Sure. If you remember, it was, I think, over a month ago that the common council approved in agreement with the DOT to take over jurisdiction of part of Highway 44 from 20th Avenue up to the Highway 41 ramp. And as part of the process to change that jurisdiction, the DOT has agreed to upgrade the traffic signals. So the Transportation Department and the Department of Public Works have been working with the Wisconsin DOT to make sure that if we put these handicap ramps in and the 75-foot sidewalk here, we can get the improvements by the DOT at this time, with the understanding that we will have future extensions of sidewalk in this area. For instance, we have a project in the capital improvement program on, I think it's called Ripon Lane, which is just down the block on Highway 44, which would connect a section of 20th Avenue to Keller Street, and it would connect to the sidewalk on Ripon Lane. So we do have future plans in this area. But the main impetus for this resolution right now is so that we can coordinate with the DOT to have the correct pedestrian signals put up when they put up the new traffic signals. And they actually are going to be changing the traffic signals also at Highway 44 and Keller Street. But all we're doing right now to make sure that they put in the pedestrian crossings at that location are to put in a handicap ramp. At this location, we have to connect the two quadrants, which would be to the northeast and to the southwest. So we're trying to get people to be able to walk around the whole intersection.
Well, people can walk around the whole intersection, but where do you think that those people are trying to go to? Are you trying to send them? Are you trying to send them all to our property to access the neighboring businesses? Because you are not planning on putting the sidewalk that's extending to the neighboring business. Like, there is no sidewalk that's going towards the Charcoal Pit or Hilton Garden Inn where, which has a good flow of pedestrians, the laundromat, or the Super Eight Hotel, or the restaurant next to it, Friar Tux. Those are the people who, these pedestrians you are trying to get to those places, they are not going to be able to go through to those places because we are not extending those sidewalks to those properties. We are just bringing the sidewalks into our properties on both forks.
And that would be an answer to the question. That would be locations we would be looking at then for next year. First, we get the pedestrian crossing done at, at the intersection, and then we can extend it on Twentieth, and we can extend it on Highway forty-four to the locations that you just indicated.
So, you still want the two, you still want two forks coming into our property from that sidewalk because basically, it's going to be a C, C-section kind of, C, well, I don't know how to explain it, but it's going to be a C sidewalk that's going to come into our property that will initiate from one driveway of ours and coming into other driveway of ours. And then if you
It would be the first leg of sidewalk in this, in this quadrant. You're right, that it's, it's just the beginning. It's not extending to other neighbors, but the plans would be to extend it to your other neighbors.
So, when you extend those to the other neighbors, then we will, you will be taking those two sections of the Cs out and leave one
No. No, tho, those areas are required to, to provide handicapped access, the curb cut, so that anybody crossing at the intersection can press the button, get the light so that they have the right to, you know, over the, the vehicle traffic. That's the purpose of, of putting in that handicap ramp.
It's really just a timing issue, sir, because when, when jurisdiction transfers from the state to the city, which is happening here, the state usually makes some improvements before they go away from the situation. So, they're putting, they're fulfilling their end of the, the agreement or how they've typically done it in the past, and then the state goes away, and then it's all our responsibility. And our goal will be to extend the sidewalks. They are going to be disconnected. I think you correctly pointed that out, but in the next few years, we'll be extending those. It's just a matter of timing. The DOT won't come back after they close jurisdiction. They'll only do it when they are transferring jurisdiction, and that's why we're doing it this way at this time.
So, if, if we didn't do this at this time, the Transportation Department would be responsible for all the cost of the traffic signals for the pedestrian features on the traffic signals. So, we're trying to get the DOT to pay for that right now.
So, we would be, ultimately, we're, we're saving money.
That's correct.
But unfortunately, by our policy, the property is going to get assessed now. If we didn't do it now, the property would be assessed later, but then we would pick up a hundred percent of the cost for the signal. So, it really is a matter of time.
Because there is a requirement to have that sidewalk, that handicap accessibility at that intersection anyways, right?
Ultimately, right.
So, we're actually saving money by having the Department of Transportation do it in the transfer now, even though it's kind of like a dead-end sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay.
And besides that, I'm thinking that the city has already surveyed the lot because there are, there is drainage where we are planning to put the sidewalk in.
Yes, we have to deal with the drainage in the area, and so they, they have a preliminary design, but they, they know that they have to deal with the drainage in the area.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for that.
Moving on, is there any items that the council would like to remove from the agenda for separate consideration?
I would request that we remove item resolution fourteen three sixty-five for separate consideration.
So, we will remove consent agenda item fourteen dash three six five for separate consideration.
Ms. Deputy Mayor, may I? Just a, a comment on resolution fourteen dash three sixty-eight. I will abstain my vote from that. I am related to one of the persons being appointed to a board, so I would like to abstain from that.
We need to pull it then.
We need to pull it? Okay.
Yeah.
We will pull fourteen dash three sixty-eight.
Thank you. And I would also like to remove resolution fourteen dash three sixty for separate consideration. I am not in support of spending fifty-two thousand dollars on carpeting for the safe, or floor replacement for the safety building at this point in time. I think if we were in a better financial situation, I know this was taken care of in the CIP previously, I just don't think it's financially responsible to replace flooring in a building where that's, I mean, it's not a welcome center. It's a, I, I had my tour of this facility. It's, it serves its purp, its purpose just fine. I wasn't even aware of stains on the carpet until they were deliberately pointed out to me, so I, I would not be supporting this purchase at this time.
Okay. Any other items from the consent agenda? Okay. I would ask for a motion and second to accept items on the consent agenda minus resolution fourteen dash three six five, resolution fourteen dash three six eight, and resolution fourteen dash three six zero.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a, a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items presented today. Can you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Deputy Mayor, just a quick question.
Sure.
I just have a question for staff on, on resolution fourteen dash three sixty-one. It's, it's related to the amendment, the agreement for AECOM Technical Services. It, and I don't know if it's just me, it seems like there's been a handful of these that have come up lately, all with, with AECOM. I, I don't know if it's a case where it's common for, for these to occur, or if there's a, if there's a, you know, if they're, if, if the bids are just falling short of, of the
This one relates to a stormwater detention basin where we are applying for a permit. There were some issues raised by the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers that they, we hadn't anticipated. They wanted some additional information, and they, we had to do some additional processes that weren't initially anticipated, and that's what this one addresses.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
Ask for Pam.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Curated six. Okay. Moving on to the first item that we pulled from the consent agenda, item fourteen dash three six five. Discussion? Motion. Oh, I'm sorry. A motion.
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Discussion.
I, I, this was pretty much discussed, asked and answered previously, but this is, just to put this on as a separate item based on comments that were made earlier this evening.
Just, I wouldn't, one comment. Council, I mean, Mr. O'Day was concerned that council didn't have a lot of information, knew a lot about it. We did have discussions on it previously to tonight's council meeting, so I think council's fully aware of the city's intent to purchase this property, and that it, it does follow our long-range comprehensive plan, as Mr., we've talked about, and, and Mr. Davis has commented on. So, I, I support this purchase. I think it's, it's an opportunity, again, for the city to buy it at a, at a decent rate. We have a tenant for three year, guaranteed three years. We have a great organization running it on our behalf, and it falls into our strategic plan. So, I'll be supporting the purchase of this property. Thank you.
Anyone else care to comment? I would ask to take the roll call vote. Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Curated six. Next resolution to consider is fourteen dash three six eight.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay. Pam, if you'd take the roll call vote. Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Curated five, one, present. Last one, resolution fourteen dash three six zero. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just to, just make a comment on this. In the background information, information that we're given, it just says that the flooring products are designed for high-traffic areas, have proven durable, and will reduce maintenance and custodial costs. So, I think in the end, we are saving some money. Yes, fifty-two thousand is a lot for carpeting, but it isn't a, it, it also talks about that this is a continuation of operational efficiency, communication workflow within the police department. So, I think it's appropriate that we continue to maintain our facilities. I brought this up last night at the budget workshop, that we need to continue to maintain our facilities, have some plans in place to maintain our facilities, and that as, as staff determines that equipment needs to be replaced, or in this case, carpeting, I think it's appropriate, and, and where it was in our budget already approved from last year, I think it's appropriate to continue to move forward with replacements. I'll be voting in favor of the carpeting.
One addition, it's, it's more than carpeting. It's tiles and porcelain tiles, too.
Correct.
And those, those materials are, they do re, have a longer life, and they do reduce maintenance.
Any other comments?
Well, obviously, I'm not in support of this, but I just think, looking at our current budget situation, we need to kind of tighten our purse strings a little bit with spending this much money on carpeting, or tile, or whatever it may be. Personally, I have carpet in my kitchen, which is horrendous. I'm not in a financial position to replace that right now, so I will continue using my kitchen, even with the carpeting I don't like. I think they should do the same. I don't, I don't see how dirty carpet affects our police officers out on the streets where they should be.
Any other comments? Ms. Pam? Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
No.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Curated five, one. Next, we have new ordinances. There will be no formal action taken this evening. First is ordinance fourteen dash three seven two, approve request to annex to the city Boschwicks annexation, Plan Commission recommends approval. Next one, ordinance fourteen dash three seven three, repeal and recreate a portion of the Stormwater Management Ordinance, Section fourteen dash one definitions. Next, we have new resolutions. First on this list is resolution fourteen dash three seven four, approve developer agreement with Perfect Seal, TIF twenty-seven.
Ms. Allison Osby, at this point, I will be excusing myself from the meeting and any discussion or consideration of this resolution as I am, I am employee of the applicant, hold stock in my personal account as well as my 401K in the applicant.
Well noted. Mr. Peck. Mr. Davis? Is he just on call there? Okay. I need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a question with Mr. Davis. Obviously, this is a tax increment district number twenty-seven, and I know at the last council meeting, the mayor asked, I think, this is kind of the same question. What's the benefit to have a development agreement, aside just approving another TIF district? What, what are the benefits to the city to having this type of agreement?
Good question. The, the development agreement actually implements a major piece of the tax increment finance district, and that is the, the PEGO assistance that, to the Perfect Seal, Bemis Healthcare Systems, I believe. This ensures that they perform what they've promised in their application, and they have to report that information to the city prior to the city dispersing any PEGO payment to the corporation. So, the construction and the job retention and expansion and the wages all have to be documented.
Okay. So, it's a, it's another layer of protection for the city and, and the citizens of Oshkosh that, that not only that they're a great company, but they'll continue to abide by the rules and regulations of the agreement.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Just as a Ms. Lawrenson, you look like you've got that look.
Yep. You didn't ask for the public comment.
My apologies. Is there any public comment?
Hello again. Elizabeth Hartman, CEO of Champco, forty-three East Seventh Avenue, and I'd just like to speak in support of this resolution. This allows the city to capture growth of a very important Oshkosh employer who is making significant capital investments in our community and adding to the employment base when this business has, you know, facilities around the world at which it could do this expansion, probably at a lower cost. And they are choosing to expand here in our community, and I, I urge you to support and approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the
Mr. Davis, I do have a question. In the memo we got here on the second page on the bottom, it states, "Employment levels will be verified by a submittal from Bemis Healthcare Packaging, which may be verified by audit." Who pays for the audits of this employment verification? Would that be them or us?
We, can I, can I help? There is a provision for certain expenses of the city to be paid in implementing the TIF, and my guess is if we would go down that route, that would be used for that, correct?
That would be my expectation.
Bring it back to council for discussion.
Just a, just a quick comment again, and it was about, you know, Mr. Herman's discussion of the developer agreement, and, and these are, I, I, I mean, there's been development agreements in the city before, and this is probably one of the, the more well-developed ones, but I know in other communities elsewhere, oftentimes, oftentimes, these kind of situations are seen as corporate welfare, and then a company isn't able to live up to its expectations, the expectations it, it presented when it got the grant. These developer agreements are really a defined mechanism for, for helping, helping the applicant, but ensuring that if, if for whatever reason, those, those, I guess, those job creation statistics, the, the valuation of, of the new construction, if those, if those aren't met, if those thresholds aren't met, there's some recourse here, and there's some protection. So, I, I think we have every confidence that, that Perfect Seal is going to be able to fulfill and perhaps even exceed the, the, the details that are outlined here in the developer agreement, but, but for the, you know, the citizens to know, this is a, a bit of a guarantee that, that allows the city some recourse if those aren't met.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Anybody else? Ms. Uber? Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Curated five. Would somebody be willing to retrieve Mr. Peck?
Oh, he's probably right around the corner.
No. Did you pay him dues? This is quiet, man. You're naughty, boy.
Next, new resolution, resolution fourteen dash three seven five, approve settlement agreement and release of claims Eugene E. Roche Jr., William T. Friday, and Tracy Gunderson, pertaining to a promissory note executed by the RDA for property located at three six two Michigan Street, former Boatworks property, and authorized transfer of TIF funds for purpose of the same. RDA recommends approval. Public discussion? Comments? Okay. Bring it back to the council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have one question. We all know what it's all about, but I think the community needs a little explanation of what this all is, so I don't know if Mr. Roloff or Mr. Davis wants a comment, or the city attorney. Would like to comment on just what this, this is all about and why
Public discussion? Comments? Okay, bring it back to the council.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have one question. We all know what it's all about, but I think the community needs a little explanation of what this all is. So I don't know if Mr. Roloff or Mr. Davis wants a comment or the city attorney would like to comment on just what this this all about and why what dealing with the Boatworks, what's this all about?
Sure. This was a the Boatworks property was a combination of a gift and sale. The property at the time, back in two thousand and five, was valued at six hundred thousand dollars. The transaction noted it was a gift of, I think, three hundred and seventy-five. And the purchase portion was a two hundred and twenty-five promissory note. So essentially, the city said, in the future, we're going to pay the two hundred and twenty-five for that property. When one of a couple of things happened, either the city sold the property for development and you would use the proceeds from that sale to pay off that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, or the city made a decision to develop the property on its own. Two thousand, a lot of things changed after two thousand and five. The development that was anticipated has not occurred to date. So the beneficiaries of the promissory note have been watching what's been happening on the property. The city has done some work on the property. They cleared the buildings. We've done maintenance types of things. There's a the Riverwalk is being constructed along a small portion of the front of that now. They had, through their attorney, requested that the city pay that promissory note at this time. The whether that's development of the property is contemplated by that agreement or not is a debatable issue. However, our staff reviewed the issue. We talked with the city manager, Mr. Davis, Ms. Larson, and myself, and we found a method that worked to finance it at this point in time with through a transfer of TIF money. So it's a donation from TIF seven to TIF twenty to pay it out at this, to pay that note out at this time. And then it's money we owed anyway. So it's just a matter of when it's getting paid out. Then our anticipated result is that the property still will be sold at some point for development. At that time, the money, we wouldn't have to pay the money back because it's already been paid. The money would go back into TIF twenty. So because there was that that financing method available and because it was something that we did owe, it was it's just a matter of timing. We're recommending doing it at this time and taking care of that obligation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please. Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Curated six.
Moving on to council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. First note, discuss workshop for update on economic development. Go EDC, asked for by Mr. Peck.
You know, this is a holdover from the previous meeting. I don't know if we want to schedule a workshop, but where there was some information that was published in the Oshkosh Northwestern today related to Go EDC. They have approved their strategic plan. They're moving forward. The public and private partnership for economic development that we envisioned two years ago is now just about up and running. So I think that there's some good things coming forward with the city, not only the city government, but also the city as a whole and economic development. So I don't know if we need to schedule a workshop at this time, but it's just something I wanted to keep on here and to also have any council input as well. But like I said, some very good news in the past couple of weeks, and especially today. And some of the things that we did tonight, our pieces related to economic development.
Just a comment off of what Mr. Councilmember Peck said. I think it's important, now that all the groundwork stuff is done, that council does get kept appraised of the direction that it's going. Not that we want to run it by any means, but just that, you know, as success stories come out, as developments come out, you know, there'll be some funding, I'm sure, in the budget coming up that you're going to be looking for us for direction. So I think since it is a goal that was was given to Mr. Roloff, that council continues to get those updates on a regular basis. Because there was quite a gap there for a while where we really didn't know what was going on. We heard a lot of stuff, but not a lot of stuff. And obviously, you know, we get asked questions from the citizens and the community to where we're going with this. And there are a lot of partners to it. Obviously, the university, the school district, the chambers part of it, Fox Valley Tech's part of it, our business community's part of it. So I just think that continued information to council members and in that because you'll be asking us for support, I'm sure, down the line in other areas. So as much information we get, the better.
I would agree.
Oh, I forgot one other thing. The Shannon Aviation just recently announced a location here. They are an aircraft parts manufacturer for, I believe it's Piper Aircraft or something like that, aftermarket parts. They'll be locating on the airport in the old Basler facility, and they're bringing ten jobs to this community. So it's ten jobs, but it's 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 growth in Oshkosh. People see Oshkosh as a place to come to and that they know that we are serious about economic development.
I thank both of you because I know Mr. Herman also wanted to bring that one up. And Nancy Jo Dietzen of our staff was a player in getting that going and making sure that we could accommodate them. And they have an interest in, perhaps, as they grow and expand to be one of the first tenants in the Aviation Industrial Park, which since you also gave me another opportunity, September fourth is the scheduled groundbreaking for that at 1:00 PM. If you could put that on your calendars. Real excited that we're going to be able to do that. And hopefully, they'll be one of our first tenants in there.
And in a former life, as the chairman of the Aviation Committee when I served on the county board, a lot of people look at the airport as it's just for EAA, but there are a lot of jobs out at that airport that are good-paying jobs in this community. And the airport, you don't necessarily have to be able to go to an airport to get on a plane to have an airport show value to your community.
The next item, which I'm not sure exactly who asked for this to be on tonight's discussion, but the UW-Oshkosh Accelerator Program?
Actually, I'd like to chime in. Elizabeth Hartman has been working with the university, and I was expecting her to be here to talk a little bit about that. They have a program that they're going to be starting this fall and continuing through next spring into EAA. And I think they want to take an opportunity to take ten or fifteen minutes to explain what the accelerator program is, what their plans are, and how that's going to complement the city's other economic development efforts. So I think they're looking to get a special point, a special presentation at the earliest possible meeting to give you guys an update on that piece of the economic development program.
So you're saying a potential workshop?
Maybe either a workshop or something, a presentation at the council meeting for about ten or fifteen minutes.
I think, you know, staff could look at a time when we have a little lighter agenda. We've done that before where they've, you know, we've had the bid do it that way. We've had other groups come up and do a ten, fifteen-minute presentation at the beginning of council meeting. I think that would work for something like this and that. So it'd be great.
Will do.
Best way to do it.
Good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Council member announcements and statements Councilor Peck would like to talk about and follow up on the neighborhood night out?
Neighborhood night out was last Tuesday evening. Ms. Allison Osby, Mr. Cummings, and myself, we carpoolled. And I think we made, I think it was nine out of the fourteen that were there. We enjoyed our time getting out, meeting the citizens. There were some very, very good comments that were made by the citizens at that we talked to. One in particular was a gentleman that I went to high school with way back in the seventies. His family moved to Oshkosh in nineteen sixty-nine from the Milwaukee area. And he commented to Ms. Allison Osby, was standing next to me when this discussion was made, and he said, when they moved here, his mother, like, why did we move here? It was there were streets with no curbs, no gutters, nothing like that. And this gentleman, like I say, has now lived here since nineteen sixty-nine. He graduated from Oshkosh North High School, went on to college, got his teaching degree, came back and taught in the taught in the Oshkosh School District. And the comment he made was that the position that Oshkosh is in and what is happening in Oshkosh is something that is just fantastic that he hasn't seen, and he is glad that he has he's been here. And he has seen, like I say, Oshkosh in its trough and has now seen Oshkosh in its renaissance. The other thing was the neighborhood associations that we talked to, just the the passion, the vitality that these organizations have for their neighborhoods and wanting to work with the city in building their neighborhoods, making them better, investing in their neighborhoods, enhancing equity, and growing from there. The other thing I wanted to point out was the the people that were involved in those, staff that were involved in it. And Alan, it was.
Elizabeth Williams and Ben Krumener did a fantastic job organizing.
Also, as well as Darren and Mr. Buck was at Middle Village.
And we also want to thank the police department and the fire department for the staff that were involved in that. And it was just a wonderful evening to get out and meet the citizens and talk to them and just hear what the citizens really think of what what Oshkosh is. And and to a person, while yes, there were a few issues that were negative, there was every person had something positive to say about what was going on in the community and that proud to be here and what Oshkosh is doing.
And just to follow up to Mr. Peck's comments, I also went out there tonight to four of them. I didn't carpool with the rest because we didn't want to take over the events. But I was at the one on Murdoch at St. Andrew's Church. I went to the Menominee Park one at the Circle Hazel Street that had an event at the new pavilion, which they were excited about. And they actually had a nice band playing there. They had about seventy-five people there. And I ended up at the Stevens Park late at the end of the event, but they also had live music. So our citizens are really embracing this neighborhood association program, and they're putting on some great events. And I've mentioned it before, they've already brought some things forward to council for consideration. So they are making a difference in their neighborhoods. And I think there's a whole different attitude going on in the city of Oshkosh, as Mr. Peck said. So I enjoyed it, too. Thank you.
My comment is ditto to both Councilor Peck and Councilor Herman. It was it really was a great night out and beautiful weather. I mean, we couldn't have asked for for a better evening. And I swear, the way that the police department staff and the firefighting staff was working with the neighborhood children, I swear they were recruiting for future years.
And lots of good food.
Yeah, lots of good food.
Yeah.
All right. We have citizen statements to council. This is the second opportunity during the meeting to talk. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other or other electioneering. Mr. Gray, see you at the podium.
Thank you. My name's Gary Gray, eight fifteen West Linwood. I almost forgot my address. I'm sorry. Reason I'm up here is that it's fascinating. For years, there's been interest in working with developing or redeveloping the riverfront. And the city, along with a regional development agency, is having a series of workshops. Unfortunately, two of those workshops have occurred already, but the next one is a week from tonight at five o'clock at the senior center on Campbell on the south building. And I would urge all the council members who have not attended one of these events, come to meetings. They're not they're not really meetings. They're basically events where people who attend, the citizens who attend are asked their opinions on how they should, how the riverfront should be developed. And it's not really a meeting where people talk to you. The citizens talk to the staff people and fill out various items indicating their interest in how they think the riverfront should be developed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just comment on that? Mr. Gray, I did attend the one today at Beckett's with with my oldest son, actually. He actually had quite a few suggestions, which was which was nice to see. So if anyone is planning on going next week, I would encourage you to bring your children since the decisions we are making today will definitely affect them in the coming years. So maybe we'll see you next week.
And I saw Mr. Gray there today, and Mr. Cummings was also at Beckett's earlier.
You two missed each other by about five minutes.
Oh, really?
I think Mr. Herman was also at the meeting at the event this noon. And I think both those gentlemen were at the meeting a week ago.
Yep.
Thank you.
Deco Day, seven fifteen Hazel. Mr. Herman, I would like to pretty much address initially to you or your question about or your comment that I was questioning whether the people here knew anything about what was going on. That is partially true, but my major concern and barb of concern was that in this type of an instance, on that situation, the general public doesn't know. And why, again, like I said, I was going through on that. A couple of other comments I'd like to make, and one of them is been hearing a lot about the redevelopment and all this and all the millions of dollars and how everything is going up. But the reality is, a good percentage, and probably not most of it, or maybe most of it, I mean, is simply moving from one spot to another. You build all kinds, and this is all that's ever going to happen, probably, along the riverfront, is you are going to build residential going through. Every time you build something new on the riverfront with benefits from taxpayer dollars, you're devaluing some other part of the city. Oshkosh is not growing at a rate near fast enough. And several years ago, city staff actually made the comment when they wanted to buy some houses, that Oshkosh was way overbuilt at that time. So you got to take a whole lot of this that you're going through. Personally, my feeling on the Riverwalk is the major reason we're doing it is because we wasted a lot of money on a couple of tunnels under the Wisconsin Avenue Bridge. We've got probably close to three million dollars, two million minimum, maybe three million dollars worth of boat docks sitting in the river there. Those docks on the other side of Oregon Street, I've never seen a boat there, and I go across their bridge a lot. You know, the rest of them are probably totally empty seventy-five percent of the time, possibly on a Thursday night or something, or when they're at the yacht club or whatever it is, whatever it is, as they're meeting at Beckett's, there's a few boats there, you know. So there's a lot of money going on there. We hear a lot of lip service about neighborhoods and stuff like this. We've got, let's bring in neighborhood group and do all this kind of stuff. Well, the truth of it is, if you spent one-tenth of the amount of money and effort into fixing up the older neighborhoods in Oshkosh, taking care of the streets and doing stuff like that, and we're a hell of a long ways away from having good streets in Oshkosh. I live on the east side. I have a couple of good streets, but every one of my vehicles rattles like hell just trying to get around places. A few years ago, when I was injured and had to ride in a ambulance, the driver did nothing but apologize for the ride that I was experiencing because he couldn't find a good street on the east side of Oshkosh. Knocked a little bit there, but you know, that I really believe that. If you, and I will say, we are improving the streets at a greater rate than we used to. Unfortunately, we had thirty years of total neglect of streets and sewers in Oshkosh, and we're making up for it now. However, you can do a lot better on that. And that's it, I guess. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Deener. I just got word on the last couple days that, you know, the city credit union, a lot of your city employees, I was a county and a city employee, that you know that Central Credit Union is going to merge. I just want to inform you, all you people, that they all have to apply for a job. And I'm saying it openly because I'd like them to realize who they have there, who they've let go. I and my husband and my daughter thank Oshkosh Central Credit Union for what they've done and how we achieved. And I would just like them to realize, to keep the employees, and they are talking about maybe moving over to South Park. I would would like them to really stop and think. And I think the twentieth street is big. We had to leave this one due to circumstance. I don't care what happened in the past, but I I really have to say this this evening because if it wasn't for Mark and a few other people there and all the employees, I would not be here where I am today. So I would like you to really think on staying on twentieth. So, I would like you to really think on staying on 20th and not going over to South Park.
Just a clerk, before you talk about clarification, that's not a city entity, right? That's a separate organization? We're not, we're not affiliated with it at all?
We have no control over it. It's private business.
I understand. I know city employees still go there.
Yeah.
Even if, I just want them to let people know of that.
Not any control we have over that, Ms. Deener. We have no control over that.
Bob Cornell, 548 West Smith. I had a comment that I had planned on sharing with you in the first session, but apparently this time of the day is more abundant with senior moments. So, when I finally remembered, I want to get it to you. And it's to plant the seed. As my grandfather told me a long, long time ago, before any of you were born, I believe, if you don't plant the seed, you can't harvest a crop. So, when I was watching the budget workshop last night, a thought hit me. Whether it was the city manager or the finance director directing your attention to some area of the budget that you were going to discuss or subject of the budget you were going to discuss, you were looking at hard copy and making reference to it. For the handful of us that watch these things have no idea what that hard copy is. So, today's technology went from the right brain to the left brain and said, here's a projection screen right behind them. What would be wrong with projecting the hard copy on the screen? So, in the act of transparency, because boy, that's a buzzword now, anybody that's watching could follow what you're following in your hard copy. So, it's just a thought, it's just a seed. And I'm also realistic enough to know that all seeds don't germinate and harvest. So, give it a thought.
Thank you. Just, just a small reminder in regards to citizen statements to council. We just have to remember in the future, obviously, this is televised, it is on the radio, and certainly, we want to make sure that we, we do keep it PG rated. So, you know, we certainly appreciate hearing from citizens, and we certainly appreciate feedback from council. However, we certainly need to keep it PG, just as a reminder. Next, moving on to city manager announcements and statements. Mr. Roloff, you are up.
Thank you, Ms. Deputy Mayor. Two items for your attention. First off, we had to do an emergency repair to the, to the emergency generated wastewater treatment plant during one of the storm events were going on. One of the generators overheated, so we had to do an emergency repair. Normally, that would require, if it wasn't an emergency, would have required council approval with the emergency. I had to authorize it immediately. Mr. Brand took care of that for us, and I appreciate that. Just wanted to report that to council. And then, the second item is, has to do with the engineering services agreement with CH2M Hill. It's under the threshold, but I'm, it's over the threshold that I do, I am required to report it. The CH2M Hill is looking at the design of a zebra muscle control system for our intake at the water treatment plant. That's just one of those things that, as things come up, zebra muscles, 20 years ago, we wouldn't have been having this discussion. They're there now, and, and our voting member of council has a comment about that. So, I have a feeling he's going to confirm that they're there and we have to address that issue.
They're there, obviously, they're. My question is, how much has the DNR been politically correct? Stuck their nose into this whole thing. I mean, what do we have to do with the DNR to let, so that we can do this?
I was going to make a comment earlier when Councilmember Fitzgerald had said something about AE Comm, and it's like, is this about AE Comm? And I was like, no, I think we should blame the DNR because that's why the city attorney was involved in that. So, that happens sometimes, but I have good relationships with the DNR, and I want to maintain those. So, I'll, I'll just leave myself to that, and Steve will sing their praises.
Actually, we have zebra muscle control that was installed with the intakes that went in in 2002. It's a, it's a continuous use chemical feed system that sends a combination of chlorine and ammonia chloramines, which we use for disinfection, small dose, about 3,000 feet out into our intakes, and that prevents the zebra muscle from developing within our intake. So, we have the system in place over the 15 or so years that it's been operating. Again, it's a continuous use system. We've had a few things that we've noticed as far as maintaining it, that we're going to have to do some additional work and, and restructure it, redesign it a little bit and get it up into good operating condition. So, this really is essentially a maintenance repair item for that zebra muscle intake system that we currently have.
Mr. Brand, off of that, how serious is the problem in Lake Winnebago?
Well...
And, and do we potentially have concerns that it could affect our system because it could overwhelm it somehow?
No. We, we dealt with that when we put the intakes in to prevent them from, we've actually had, when we were building the intakes, we were using some old backup intakes and things. We've actually had them in the plant, but once we start doing our, our treatment system and stuff, we can take care of them. And I've been hearing from some of the fishermen and folks out in the lake that they're not seeing as many zebra mussels out there now as they have in the past. One of the things that a lot of people don't realize, to maybe get off the top of a little bit, zebra mussels have provided lots of additional water clarity, which means a lot more plant growth in Lake Winnebago, which means when these plants decay, we have huge releases of phosphorus that are naturally occurring. It's not because of farm runoff, it's not because of wastewater treatment. So, in dealing with our phosphorus issues, zebra mussels are related to that, but we're also trying to quantify what's actually happening as part of the natural system when we're dealing with phosphorus and make sure that if we have to make significant investments in phosphorus control, that we're going to have some impact on what's happening out there. But it's all part of the system that's out there, and our controls work very well, and we really don't have any issues with zebra mussels.
And I hope the city attorney allows me a little leeway on this question because it's not on here, but do we have any concerns? What was it, a couple weeks ago, you hear one of the Great Lakes communities had issues with algae issues? And I know we have algae blooms and some real serious algae. Do we have any concerns that we could have drinking water affected?
Those algae blooms have been happening on Lake Winnebago for years and years, and when they built the new water filtration plant in 1999, one of the big issues with Lake Winnebago water is, is taste and odor. And so, in order to deal with that, as part of our treatment process, we use ozone, which is an oxidant, and granular activated carbon. And there's been a lot of research on the use of that with water treatment. And ozone followed by granular activated carbon are the most effective treatment systems out there to remove the type of toxins that were occurring in the Toledo water supply. So, we have a treatment process in place that we use for taste and odor control, but it's also extremely effective in dealing with those types of releases. So, we currently have the most effective water treatment process in place to take care of those types of issues.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
With Mr. Brand's statements, I have nothing else.
Okay. Well, I just have one other item. The council, the council would certainly like to publicly note that our city manager, Mark Roloff, has achieved an anniversary with the city, August 4th, in which he is now six years with the city. So, we just wanted to acknowledge that. We wanted, obviously, thank you for your service.
The gray hairs really show, huh? Thank you.
Happens to presidents, too.
Yeah. CEOs of presidents be great, too. Well, you know, they do that, you know, they do that. They show the picture of the president when they enter office, and then eight years later, we'd like to see one of those.
Yeah, that's, I wouldn't. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. That concludes this evening's meeting. I would like a special thanks to Ms. Ubrich and Ms. Lawrenson. I certainly think I gave you guys both a workout and earned your pay this evening, so, thank you. So, I need a motion, a second to adjourn.
Some more.
Second.
I'm sorry. That's okay. I was just going to say, good job tonight. Oh, thank you.
Gee, I didn't...
Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Yeah, second.
All right. Adjourned.